Okay, we'll get started with the pre-meeting and fiscal year 2022 budget calendar. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every year about this time, we propose a calendar which lines out the steps that we need to take and the meetings we need to have with all of you in order to get a lot of the information and direction that we need from you to line it out and square it away so that we can, you know, more easily put together a budget that, you know, reflects your will and direction and guidance. Tonight is that first step, of course, in sort of less formal means so that indeed you can provide a comment and ask questions and that kind of thing. And so if I could defer some time to Mr. Pitlick and to be available for any questions you might have, we'd be pleased to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As the City Manager mentioned, the budget calendar should be before you. If you have it in color, the items highlighted in red would be the items that would require your attention in particular, that would be scheduled during meetings. And the items in black are more for internal use as we go through the process to put the budget together. Statute requires that the budget be approved no later than the third Tuesday in June. So we have the target date of the meeting of June 15th to have this all together and to be put before you for your approval to put the appropriation for fiscal year 2022. Really nothing new in the agenda or the calendar as compared to last year, pretty much tracks the same and the same items that we discussed last year. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions from anyone? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to baseball field updates, rentals and lease agreements. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This discussion isn't a whole lot different than the discussion we went through with respect to Mike Lansing Field and those nuances associated with those who would like to have those fields available for their entities' uses. We do have some other fields, however, that we need to be sure you're comfortable with the direction we're moving in. Again, not entirely different than what we saw in the Lansing discussion, but nonetheless important for you to weigh in on and make sure you're comfortable with. And so if I could defer some time to Mr. Cortez to walk us through that, I'd appreciate it. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the three fields that we kind of have before us right now are with regard to Tanny and Washington and Crossroads Number Four. We put those for RFP, which is kind of, you know, typical for my department to do in these types of matters. We did receive one proposal for Crossroads Four, which was from Casper Baseball Club. And then we received two proposals for Tanny, which was Casper Youth Baseball and Casper Baseball Club. And they received two also for Washington, which were those same two. We kind of are proposing, as far as a recommendation for this body, to consider kind of a hybrid of what we did, say, with Lansing since it was a single field. What we're looking at is for Crossroads Four, the sole proposal that got a, you know, from Casper Baseball Club would be the, basically, we would award that lease to that entity because they were the only ones that put in for it. In discussions with Casper Youth Baseball and the Casper Baseball Club, it seems like Casper Baseball Club would be willing to kind of forego having Washington Field as far as a facility that they would run, provided that they could, you know, get what they needed for usage from Tanny. And what we're proposing for Tanny is that us city staff would manage that field, which is different than what we've done in years past, but kind of for the same reasons that the manager kind of outlined with regard to what we talked about with Lansing. In this case, we do have two kind of competing entities, if you will, that would like to kind of have preference, you know, which I think is pretty human nature for these entities once they have that exclusive use lease, you know, they kind of want to have that control and they want to have the preference for that particular, that lease. In this case, we think that the, just to kind of keep things clean and from a fair and equitable standpoint, we think the city staff could do that probably the best, meaning we would just work with those two entities, just like what we did with Lansing, and say, what's your schedule look like? What does your schedule look like? And we would kind of come together and try to see if we could get that to all mesh up nicely. I will say that there's probably no doubt some financial implications either way. I'm going to tell you, we're not looking to make money on the leases, just like what we said with Lansing. There'll probably be some subsidy from the city in some way, shape, or form to these facilities. And right now, for instance, with regard to Tanny, what we've kind of proposed in a pro forma format to those entities is a 20% subsidy, meaning the city's going to pay, you know, we're not going to recover all of our costs, we're going to cover 20% of the field maintenance and those types of items, provided, you know, you give us your schedule and we'll see how it goes. You know, I would just remind council that these entities create sports tourism for the community and they bring in dollars and they bring in tournaments. What that subsidy level is, you know, I look forward to those discussions with this group in the future as well with the city manager. We can build it any way, there's many ways to skin this cat, but from kind of a philosophical standpoint, that's kind of where we're at. The other thing that you recall that this particular group of, the council has kind of made, you know, kind of us aware of and in discussions with the manager is when a new entity comes in to use a facility and they need, and it's already under exclusive use, you find that there's a sublease that takes place. And where we kind of have some, you know, kind of some angst or heartburn with that thing is that the new group is kind of, they're kind of forced to pay the exclusive use people for the use of the facility. And we've, you know, I don't know what those numbers are, but we do know that they're in the thousands of dollars for that incoming group. So with us managing Tanny in this case, that would be another thing we could avoid that I think this group has kind of made clear that kind of makes us all uncomfortable, you know, with regard to using a city facility and another group's kind of making money on that. And with that, that's kind of a brief overview and, you know, any questions each you might have, I'd sure welcome those at this time.
Doesn't look like it.
Proceed.
Yep, are we good with moving ahead? Okay. Thanks, Tim. Okay, we'll move on to Conwell Park background. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in response to a request to amend the name of Conwell Park to the Healing Park at Conwell or on Conwell. The question that council had was with regard to whether or not the park had any stipulations or deed restrictions or requirements that would anticipate the name of that park never changing. And while we could not find anything of that sort, we certainly did find that indeed the park was a gift of a family to the city and, as a matter of fact, is one of the oldest parks in our, in our community. So we do not believe that the amending of the name of that park facility is in conflict with any requirements or deed restrictions or whatever, that that park was presented to the city on, under, way back in the late 1800s, early 1900s. So we have prepared a resolution for your formal consideration this evening to make that name change or amend that name change, if you will, to happen if council passes the associated resolution. And so, Mr. Mayor, if any of you have any questions, we could certainly entertain those in preparation for your formal consideration this evening.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only, I have no problem with it at all. I think we have already demonstrated it's kind of a healing park. And I just want to make sure that we don't have, we have kind of a minimal thing in terms of changing the signs on the park. And I don't know that there's any legal requirements to change the name, but if there are, I would just request that we keep it to a minimum financially. Thank you.
Councilman Huber.
Do we have a, like a, did we get a written copy of that resolution, that proposed resolution?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huber, it should have been in your packets over the weekend, along with a memo that explains a bit of the history that I recapped very, very broadly.
I have some problem with my computer, probably because of me losing some of the stuff for tonight's meeting.
Oh, okay.
That's why I asked that seemingly dumb question.
No, no problem.
And I guess just to clarify, the Conwell is not coming off the name of the park, it's Healing Park at Conwell, but the name Conwell Park is staying on the signs.
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody else?
You know, Mr. Mayor, the only other question that I might want to ask about that is if there was a group of citizens that wanted to come forward and have some sort of a more elaborate kind of a memorial headstone or something like that there, you know, dedicating it, you know, talking about first responders, things like that, that would be something, I'm presuming, that would require a further resolution by some council in the future to authorize the placement of some kind of a, some sort of signage or something like that in the park. Am I correct about that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Huber, you are correct. And as a matter of fact, we do have a policy that was fairly recently approved that kind of walks us through the memorialization of benches or trees or markers that we would appeal to as well.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Need anything else on that?
No, sir.
Okay. And we'll move on to the Casper Events Center fire alarm system change order. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are seeking a change order approval, if you will, from the council with regard to the fire alarm system project that we've been working on for some time at the events center. If I could defer to Tim to quickly walk us through that, I'd sure appreciate that. Okay?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the reason this change order is in front of you is because basically the contract that we currently have for this project is out of contingency. However, the project overall is still budget neutral, meaning we took, this was an original project from like FY '19, it got rolled over into FY '20. And we've always viewed this project as kind of a multi-phase project, as I've taken many of you through that facility. I always tell people it's kind of rotting from the inside out, meaning the bones of the building are still terrific, it's a great venue, but a lot of the systems and functions that would go on within that building, whether it's HVAC to, we've talked about curtaining, we've talked about all kinds of features, in this case, it's the fire alarm system, it's all original. And so it's a 40-year-old system. We did fit it with a brand-new fire alarm panel, alarm panel. The problem is, is that a lot of the pieces and parts that feed into that panel that tell it if there's a problem within the building, they're all still original. And so what we have found is just with already having folks mobilized in the building and doing the work to get the panel replaced, it made a lot of sense for us to have them, since they know it inside and out at this point, to have them fix some of these things that need to be remedied right away versus us waiting, doing the phase two of the project, bringing in a whole new contractor possibly, and then addressing them at that point. I also would like to take the opportunity to tell you, this is not the last time you'll probably hear about this fire alarm protection system because, like I said, we have a whole nother phase that'll come up that we'll be dealing with in the upcoming budget process that Mr. Pitlick spoke about earlier. And with that, I would ask for any questions.
Okay, no questions. Need direction on that or we're good? Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, and then we'll go to agenda review. Did you want to hit these two items, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to last week's meeting, we do have a couple of things we wanted to go over with you that may necessitate a quick meeting next Tuesday to put into effect if council is willing to do so. The first of those items is with regard to following up on the liquor distribution concepts that we discussed at the end of the meeting last week, wherein we talked about possible curbside delivery for alcohol products in the interim period while the order exists to cease business operations in restaurants and bars at 10:00 at night. The attorney and I have been working on some ideas and concepts and he put together a resolution that potentially we could have you consider next week, again, if council is amenable to it. The idea generally and broadly includes the conveyance of alcohol across the city sidewalk or alley, depending on what the specifics of the resolution would suggest, in order to allow for some modicum of business to occur after 10:00, not inside the building, that a customer may want to make themselves available for. And so, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'd ask Mr. Hanley to jump in and add anything you might deem important.
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council. Basically, the only other thing I would say on this, it just makes it somewhat easier, it was felt that by some of the liquor establishments, that this would help to offset some of the losses they may have due to the COVID restrictions. We would still put as part of this that, and the way we would do it technically, is to have a resolution for your consideration to basically suspend enforcement for a period of time that would match the 18th order of the governor, as it, at least to the extent that that order and its renewals would put these limitations on the liquor establishment owners. But we would still require that the drive-up area be in the proximate adjacent to the licensed room, and also that anyone in transacting the business to accept delivery of any alcoholic beverage, they'd have to exit the vehicle, I think, for a tips evaluation, you'd have to have at least that level of certainty before you could hand liquor off to them. So with those, we would at least have it out there for your consideration. I don't know, you know, how much business these places will obtain because of that, but if they're willing and want to give it a try, I think that would be a way, basically, it's not repealing, it's just kind of suspending enforcement for a limited duration due to a public emergency declaration by the governor of the state of Wyoming.
Any questions or comments on that? All right. You just need direction from us on that, just moving forward on it?
Mr. Mayor, if we could prepare it for a special meeting consideration next week, we'd be sure to get the language of the resolution that Mr. Hanley just described in your hands and give you time to read through it and be ready for formal consideration Tuesday night.
Okay. Councilman McCarthy.
I'm assuming since this is an ordinance, it would require then a public hearing next Tuesday?
Mr. Mayor, we're actually proposing, Councilman Kathy, that it be a resolution that has a temporary effect on an existing ordinance, and so...
Okay, so it doesn't have to have a public hearing then?
Nor does it have to have more than one reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, and then do you want to move on to the second portion of this?
The other follow-up item, Mr. Mayor, that the attorney and I have been working on along with a few others, not to fail to mention the DDA. We have some ideas that we're prepared to bring forward for you to accept in next week's meeting as well in regards to the repayment of the balance that was discussed this past week. Pursuant to your informal direction last week, we have been working on some language for an MOU that actually offers three options for the DDA to consider as a means of paying down their obligation to the city, one of which would include the give-back, if you will, of one cent funding that was previously awarded to them. The other would include the opportunity for in-kind services to be extended to the city that would have a value, that would work down that balance, as well as a fundraising alternative that allows for the forgiveness of that debt pursuant to a two-to-one ratio of funds being raised for that purpose. And so the language that you would review in preparation for next week's discussion and potential approval would be along the lines of those three ideas, all of which could be available to retire that debt and do so in a specific timeframe. And so if council is broadly comfortable with that concept, again, we'll get that language in your hands so that you can read the detail more closely and be ready to move on this and wrap all these issues up before the year's end.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along those same lines, the Economic Development Joint Powers Board has also acted, if I recall correctly, to provide them with a little relief regarding the chillers. And so we might need to check into that, but I think, as a matter of fact, that we have authorized some change in helping pay for the chillers. And that just recently occurred. And I hope I'm correct on that, but I think that's what transpired.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You are, Councilman, it was $30,000, it's already been paid and the chillers in place. And they would not have been able to do that without the money provided by the Joint Powers Board. Regarding in-kind contributions, I don't expect everyone will agree with me on this, but it's my opinion that every time the DDA does a movie night for kids and families, every time they do a free concert for, that's open to the public and free for everyone in Casper to enjoy, that each time they run an event of that sort, it is in fact an in-kind donation to the city of Casper.
Anybody else? Okay. Anything else on the agenda review?
I don't think so, Mr. Mayor. So I think I'm hearing that we're going to prepare at least two items for next week's formal consideration along the lines of what we just discussed.
Yes, sir.
Good to go? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move right into the meeting then itself. Before we begin this evening, I'd like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones at this time. I now call the December 15th, 2020 regular council meeting to order. And would you record that all members are present? Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the December 1st, 2020 regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on December 9th, 2020.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the December 1st, 2020 executive session.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Kathy. Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote. The chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the December 15th, 2020 bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye? Please record the vote. Okay, now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name and address, direct all questions, comments to the mayor and only the mayor, no personal attacks on staff or council will be tolerated. Council will not respond to personnel matters, these will be referred to the city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members. Presentations are limited to five minutes and the duplication of speakers will not be allowed, nor will time extensions be permitted. Please note that public hearings and ordinances each have their own comment period, so please hold your comments on those items until we reach them. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to council?
All right, I'm a little nervous, so you bear with me.
That's right. Could we get your name and address?
Yeah, I'm Desiree Tenoco, P.O. Box 1852, 82602. And that's my first issue I have to address before I start. I don't think it's quite safe or necessary to have to give your physical address for coming to city council to speak on issues. In the past, it stopped me from coming and speaking out, but I'll start. I run a group on Facebook called Missing People of Wyoming. My main idea when starting this group was to just spread awareness about people by sharing their flyers, um, sorry, I'm so nervous, by sharing their flyers on my site. Now, over a year and a half later, I find myself in a struggle of trying to give advice that I'm clearly not qualified to give. I'm not here to bash on law enforcement in any way. Wyoming is ranked seventh in the nation for missing purses, persons, on average, we have roughly 50 at any given time. That's 7.8 out of 100,000. Sadly, there's no government-funded database in Wyoming, which leaves it up to private citizens like myself to distribute information. As a private citizen, we are underqualified and underfunded to oversee such a task. Given this daunting task, our missing persons list is not up to date. As of right now, if you search for any information for missing persons in Wyoming, my group is one of the first that comes up in all searches. Most people would take this as flattery, but I don't. I'm self-taught with no formal education on missing persons, nor have I ever experienced going through the steps in finding a loved one who's missing, and for that, I'm incredibly grateful. I feel this issue is extremely overlooked by both the general public and the government. There are a few issues where I think that Wyoming could handle better. First, I would like to see a better training for law enforcement officers regarding sex trafficking. I recognize that as a private citizen, I may not know all the training officers go through, but this seems to be an area that can be expanded on. Second, I would like to see law enforcement have better communications with people on Native American reservations. We hear all the time about missing and murdered indigenous women, and that's a problem that spans farther than just our state, but what can we do to have a clear channel of communication with missing indigenous peoples? And third, what can we do to get a government-funded database up and running? I recognize that most of this happens on a state level, but even here within our city and county, we can do better. We've reached a breaking point in the U.S. and especially within our state. The lack of resources for families of missing is quite obvious. I myself see several come to the Facebook group desperately asking for help. I have a hard time finding information online on how to address situations, how to inform family members, and how to inform the public at rapid speed. Sadly, these people are turning to me and the group for advice I feel we are extremely underqualified to assist them in. I think things have been overlooked and they themselves are not as qualified as they could be. With something as sensitive as a missing persons case, we shouldn't be solely relying on the general public and some nobody that started a Facebook group. I would love to work with members of government to try to get something more effective in place. I don't have all the answers, but I'll definitely try my best to help.
Does anybody have any questions? You and I talked on the phone the other day.
Yes, I can answer you right away.
Absolutely. So, and this is something that maybe we could follow up with the chief, but it's my understanding is there is not a missing person... is there is not a missing persons database. There is, but it's National Crime Information Center, which is a national computer when somebody goes missing, but you're talking about something locally here, a database for the state of Wyoming, when we do have missing people, that it would be in it. Where do you see that going as far as...
There's a few other states that have them up and running. Of course, I don't have all the information as far as how much they spend, how much of a budget there would be, but it's really prominent. I mean, I didn't realize when I started this group. I have no experience. I have a horrible memory. I really was not the best person to do it, and somehow it's flourished. We have nearly 9,000 members in a year and a half, so there's obviously a need for it, especially when you have family members coming and saying, hey, we're not getting this information out there. For whatever reason, they feel like police in whatever county or, you know, and I'm not trying to complain about police force, I just think that it's really, it's really become a big problem, and I'm, I feel like I'm drowning in trying to solve it. And I know you guys have it on the agenda coming up on the 5th, but I wanted to kind of be ahead of it and come up to you guys now and talk with you about it.
Councilman Powell.
Not a question, just a comment. I'm sorry I missed your name, ma'am, but I just want to comment that anyone who takes on a problem as serious as this and has the courage to come before a group like this is not a nobody.
Well, thank you, but just, I don't have experience in this, and, you know, people are really desperate to get some help, and I feel like I'm not set up to help them.
Anybody else? Mr. City Manager, is this, and I know that when we talk about missing persons, it also comes up in the conversation as far as like sex trafficking. There's a lot of people that come up on that, and we are, we have the prostitution ordinance coming forward, which is dealing with that too. Is there a way that in a work session in the beginning of the year that we could potentially broach this subject a little bit and see what, you know, if there's anything we can do?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend looking at the 12th for that possibility, and unless we just simply need more time to do some research, but at least tentatively, I'd recommend the 12th.
Okay. The 12th of January is when we're talking about, we can at least have a topic on this conversation and see if there's something we can do?
All right.
Okay, thank you. Oh, Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along those same lines, I've never been in NCIC and don't know how it works, but somewhere between NCIC, National Crime Information Center, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the FBI, since they have a lot to do with what happens on reservations, I just wonder if it's possible to sort those two databases with these two criteria, missing people on the reservation and missing people in state of Wyoming. And perhaps there's some possibility that that could be done, but again, I've never been in NCIC and never authorized to do so.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to talk to or speak to council? Okay, then we will move on to establishing public hearing dates. Please read the consent agenda titles.
Establishing January 5th, 2021. For consideration of the following two items. Item 7A1A, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 9.24 of the Casper Municipal Code. Offenses against public decency, modifying certain sections and creating new sections thereof. And item 7A1B, An Ordinance Amending Section 10.24.010 of the Casper Municipal Code.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action established the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Cathy, second by Councilman Pacheco. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance to limit the practice of massage therapy to certified massage therapists. License required.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading, the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Cathy, second by Councilman Huber. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against the massage therapy ordinance? Good evening, sir.
Hi, I'm Michael Seek, 932 South Bruce, Casper, Wyoming, and I'm still very much in favor of this ordinance. I think, for the most part, it's been a pretty thoughtful process that you've all gone through. However, I do have a couple of comments, suggestions, and questions. One, I think, might be a typographical error. On your amendments to the grandfather clause, where you're talking about two to three years from the date, the effective date of the ordinance, I think that should be prior to the effective date of the ordinance. This is kind of hard to establish something after the fact. And then also concerning the grandfather clause, there's still no mention of a limited opportunity to use the grandfather clause. Most of them are only available for like a short period of time, and then they're no longer an option. The way you still have it listed there basically leaves it open-ended so that basically anybody could use the grandfather clause even five or six years from now. And that is just like an oversight, I think. And then I do have one, a question concerning the massage establishments. Looking through the ordinance, it appears that your rules for establishing massage establishments are more for your smaller businesses that just do nothing but massage. But for the past seven years, I've been a staff therapist at the Wyoming Athletic Club, and massage is just one of about 50 or 60 services that they provide to their members. And also, it was owned by a corporate entity, not from this state, so how do those people go through the process to get permission to hire massage therapists? I mean, I could see if it's just a local person who has a little massage establishment, they are here, they can do it, but that seems a little complicated to involve a larger health club or corporate entity, because our owner didn't even live in the state. And that's just one of my questions. And I also have a question concerning the general liability. I was wondering, what is the difference between general liability and professional liability? And the reason I ask is, as a member of the AMTA, I have a professional liability insurance policy that dwarfs the general liability policy that you require. I'm wondering, would I still have to carry, get the general liability policy even though I have a professional liability policy that dwarfs that one? And then, I still am concerned about the names masseur, masseuse, and massagist. I realize they're not going to leave, but it would be nice if we could include the actual professional titles that most massage therapists use, in addition to massage therapist, massage practitioner, and massage technician. I think that should be in there. And also, I just have a question too also. You intermittently refer to permits and licenses, and I'm wondering, what exactly is the difference? To be a licensed massage therapist, you have to have a permit. Well, why can't you just have a license? I mean, it's kind of unclear when I'm reading the bill exactly what you're saying. That might just be an oversight also. And then I have one totally stupid question. When we do get our certificate or permit or license, is it going to be some ugly little license like a building permit, you know, you could put on your garage? Or will it be something that you can hang in your office and say, wow, I've got a license to practice massage? I mean, that's kind of superficial on my part, but I thought about that. And one more thing. Since the Wyoming Athletic Club has closed, I basically have not had any place to do massage, so I've been doing in-house massage for my clients that wanted it. And reading through this, I kind of get the idea that I would not be allowed to do that to see my clients in their homes, and the clients that are mostly that I see in my homes are older people that can't get out and about anyway. So I think I would like to see some kind of clarification on that so that I would know that I can see these clients. I mean, does my permit go with me wherever I go without breaking any rules? And that's really all I have to say, other than I do appreciate the council taking this task on. I think you've tried to do a thoughtful and good job of doing this, and in just the few sessions that I've observed you doing everything else, I'm really impressed with everything you have to do and how well you seem to do it, and I give you a hand clap and a couple finger snaps.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Cathy.
Yes, one thing, in answer to your question about going to other people's places, it asks for a business address, which if your home is now your business address, then, like myself, I am a consulting engineer, and we have a business address that is on Three Crowns Drive. But by the same token, I can go out to a job site, which is what you would be talking about if you go to somebody else's house, and I am still covered and that is still a part of it. So, yes, you should be able to go to other people's houses wherever, but that is your primary place of business, so to speak, for legal purposes if somebody needed to get ahold of you. That would go on your tax filing papers, things like that, okay? Does that, because I know several people have kept asking about that, and where it asks for an address, it's only for where your business address is if somebody wanted to mail you a check for a payment or that type of a thing, okay? But to clarify that, that's the way it should be.
Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Seek, you were talking about adding some language about massage practitioner or technician. Where do you think that should be added into...
In that clause where you list massagists, which I'm still not sure what that means, and...
You wouldn't happen to have made note of the number in the proposed ordinance, did you? Because I'm looking, trying to see where that would fit in here.
I should have written it down, I'm sorry. But I think it's under the definition of massage therapist.
Okay, thank you all.
It's at the, Councilman Huber, it's at the top of page four in the massage therapy
Massage therapist means any person? Yeah, okay. That was kind of where I thought it might fit in if anywhere, but...
Good evening.
Elizabeth Scott, 337 South Conwell, Casper. Mayor, Councilman, and woman. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. This has been an interesting and entertaining exercise. Let's go through these restrictions again. 804-090120 and 140. Business must be licensed to be hired a massage therapist. This is very restrictive, discriminatory, and invasive. No other businesses in Casper have to go through this rigmarole of police background checks, fingerprinting to hire any employee, whether it's a secretary or a nurse or a receptionist or cook or busboy. This has unintended consequences. The businesses won't hire massage therapists. It shuts off employment opportunities in all areas and arenas, hospitals, spas, hair salons, doctors' offices. Corporations are not going to come to Casper, Wyoming and do a background check to hire somebody, and they're not going to pay to hire somebody. I think these ordinance, these particular clauses should be removed. Section 804-130, you've got a maximum education requirement here. This is expensive, burdensome, and discriminatory again. In all other occupations in Casper, people start work at entry level with their education requirements. They can work as a CNA, they can work as a nurse, as a nurse practitioner, and as they work up in their education requirements, they also work up in their job occupations, and of course, as they work up, their salaries go up, which is the incentive for getting more education in an occupation. The MBLEX test, again, is a current test. These tests come and go. I think that some of this is a big burden on the clerk. Section 804-210 and 220 restricts massage to a specific location only. Now, Councilman Cathy has said that the permit travels with you, but it doesn't say that in this particular regulation, and I think it needs to, because otherwise, it does limit the therapist to a specific location, which takes out the versatility and the range of diversification of services that they can offer to their clientele. Grandfather position is still, needs work. Amendment D2 helps, but it's still a little contradictory. Proposed amendment number two, there are no provisions in this amendment that allow for local massage therapists to work these events, especially if they are tied to the location of their business, so forth. There's some clarification that needs to be done on those. The proposed amendment number five, it's an exemption, but it doesn't exempt these businesses from the rigmarole of procuring a license to hire a massage therapist. These businesses don't have to do these, they don't have to go through this to hire a doctor or a nurse or a PT, but they do have to do so to hire a massage therapist. This isn't very practical. I think I've covered everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor or against the massage ordinance Good evening.
Good evening. Leah Juarez, 2241 Farnham is my business, but I'm a Mills resident. I do want to speak in favor of the ordinance, and I do want to really thank Councilman Cathy and Huber and Mayor Freeland, as well as the attorney. I know that you all have dedicated a lot of your own personal time to make this ordinance happen. As a business owner, I want to clearly articulate how much this helps my business and my spa. It helps me to hire qualified professional massage therapists in Casper, and, you know, a lot of these ordinances are in place already for my salon license, as well as my aesthetics license and my tattoo operator's license. So I just want to extend a huge gratitude for you all to put this together. I really appreciate the effort that you've gone to, to make this happen for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would wish to speak for or against? Good evening.
Duncan Swimmer, 4450 Smokehouse, here in Casper. I'm just moving back to here, and I practiced over for 20 years. So I'm becoming aware of all of this. But would you clarify for me the limitations of these buildings, where I'd be able to, say, open an office at in a large office buildings for private practice or not? I'm unaware of how this is affecting me in the long term. Would you clarify for that for me, please?
She's asking as far as locations, how, as far as the location where you can have massage therapy?
Yes, say I found an office building that has the basic requirements, separate bathrooms and such, hygienics available. What, am I limited to, am I limited to a certain area? Again, I am just new, moving back, so I'm wanting to clarify this as I get to myself to practice.
Councilwoman Cathy.
As far as I know, you should be, there are no limitations to where you could open a business. You can have it in your private home, you could rent a space in an office building, you could join partnership with chiropractic office.
No.
I probably wouldn't advise a tent, but if you understand what I'm getting at, but any place that would have a, that you would expect to conduct a public business.
Okay.
If that makes sense. You know, you could go rent a space at the mall if you wanted.
Okay. In regards to the background checks and such, I understand the need for that. There are too many fly-by-nights, and I appreciate the necessity of having a, you have to have qualification and training. I very much approve of that. With the background check and such, doctor's offices, the chiropractors, how does things like the physical therapy people who our field overlaps in, they do some of the things we do and some of the things we don't, vice versa, and we're equally reciprocal in things we can work together on? How does that affect their offices as well? Where they're doing stuff we do under license, but they're calling it PT and vice versa? Because there are areas that we do interact and do the same thing, such as myofosseous release.
I'm having trouble understanding her. I'm sorry, I just, I have hearing issues and...
What I'm asking is, on some of the PT, they do like myofosseous release, I do myofosseous release. If I have to have a license to do this, how does that affect them doing something that we both cross-qualify in with this licensing?
They have a physical therapy license, as far as I know. They are licensed.
Do you have that in here in Wyoming?
Do what?
We have that here in Wyoming?
Yes.
So if a PT hires an MT specifically to do that, the PT and the MT would both be able to cross-reference in that job site for the work onto the client?
In that same spot, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I understood. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henley, was there something you wanted to add, or Councilwoman Cathy got it? Okay.
I was watching him nodding.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll move on to discussion. Any discussion amongst council? Councilman Bates.
I believe that Mr. Michael and Ms. Elizabeth brought up some very good points regarding this ordinance. And though prolonging it is not what anybody wants to see or do, but their points are very valid on this. And for us to go third reading and not consider the points that they made, or to fly by and amend those sections would not be in the best interest of this ordinance either. I recommend that we look at those recommendations, because I think that some of them were very valid, and I think they should be in there. I know nobody wants to prolong it, but we want to do it right. That's what I've constantly heard regarding this, that we want to get it right the first time, and not have to keep coming back to it possibly. So I think we should take a look at that again, as much as I hate to say, because I was all thumbs up, ready to go, let's pass it, move on. They do it for a living. We need to hear it out, hear everything. So I think we should look at those.
Councilman Pacheco.
Yeah, I guess I disagree with that, and I'll just give a couple of points to it. One, I think it was very thoughtful how we did the process. I think we had a committee that spent several weeks looking at that, talking about it. I think both the council members that were on there were open to the ideas, trying to work through that process. I think that we've had three readings, three readings which we've had public comment, and we've had those discussions. The problem with it is, is that we're always going to have something in there that's not going to agree with someone. And that's just the way some policies work. And there's always, it's not going to be 100% perfect, it's not going to do those things. And so I think we're ready to move forward with it. I think it's a good policy, and I think it's good for the community. And there are many other professions in this, in this country that have, have high guidelines, and from therapists to doctors to everything, and we're just trying to enact that. And I know nobody likes regulation, but there's a certain amount of regulation that happens no matter what. And we have to be a part of that in order to create, for the health of our community. So I think it's ready, and I appreciate Councilwoman Kathy and Councilman Huber and the people that were on the committee to work on that. It was very well thought out, very well done, and I'm very, very happy with it. So I just, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with Councilman Pacheco. I think we should move forward with this. No legislation is ever going to be perfect. But I think that once we consider some of these proposed amendments that I believe were probably going to come up here in a few minutes, I think this is a good piece of legislation, and I think we should move forward with it.
Okay. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I intend to change my position tonight. I was pleased with amendment number three regarding the grandfather clause. It talks about a professional portfolio, and in my opinion, a professional portfolio would be some kind of, could even be a redacted appointment book. And that allows a lot of people to get into the business, and those names don't have to be public, and they shouldn't be public. But I will change my position on this, because I think we have spent enough time on it, and let's move forward with it. And if it needs fixing, it can be done later. So in any case, I'm going to change my position tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, any amendments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Cathy.
Yes, I have five amendments. I was advised by council to propose them one at a time, rather than all five together, so that if there was any discussion or whatever about them, that could occur. So I would propose amendment number one, that I move to amend section 8.04.10, adding the definition of licensed massage therapist to read as follows. Licensed massage therapist means a person who has obtained a permit to practice massage therapy or bodywork from the city of Casper.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so first on amendment one, adding the definition of a licensed massage therapist has been put out by Councilwoman Kathy, second by Councilman Huber. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed. Motion to amend passed.
I would propose amendment number two, for to allow traveling massage therapists to practice massage therapy on a temporary basis, and that would create section 8.04.230 to read as was in our packet and published to the members of the committee and also on the city's website.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so proposal amendment number two by Councilwoman Kathy, to amend to allow traveling massage therapists to practice massage therapy on a temporary basis, and it was seconded by Councilman Huber. Any discussion? Any amendments to that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion to amend passed.
And I would propose amendment number three, and I am going to add your comment into amendment number three, that I move to amend section 8.04.240, subsection D1 and D2 to read as follows. Actively practiced in Casper, Wyoming for at least two of the last three years prior to the effective date of this ordinance, and graduated from the School of Massage Therapy program approved by the clerk's office, which may be proven by presentation of a diploma or providing credentials, or a professional portfolio, or passed an examination acceptable to the clerk.
I'll second that.
So the amendment of amending section 804-240, subsection D1 and D2, has been put on table by Councilwoman Kathy, seconded by Councilman Huber. Any discussion? All voting aye? Oh.
Aye.
Kristin, did you have something?
Good, I can bring it up as a second amendment. I just, I think we need to address the fact that a grandfather clause usually sunset. It doesn't just exist ever.
Okay, so all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion to amend passed.
Do we want to move on to the next amendment, or, Mr. Henley, was there something we needed to do on the grandfather clause as far as the sunset goes?
I think that it sunsets by its terms. Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. I think that it probably sunsets by its terms, because there are a distinct number of people that would be practicing in the two to three years before the ordinance was adopted. And say someone had been practicing two of those three years before, but now they're on pregnancy leave, you know, they could still come back in after their child's, what, two or three years old, and make application under the words of this. But other than that, I don't see that you're going to need a grandfathering clause, because by its own terms, it is limited to a particular period of time. So, but, you know, it doesn't, if you want to put something in, you certainly can.
But we don't necessarily need it to work good as is?
I think you're good as is.
Okay. Okay. Councilwoman Cathy.
So I believe we're on to amendment number four. So I move to amend section 8.04.090, subsection B, purpose and intent for including massage therapy and bodyworks businesses in practice. And basically, we are removing the last three lines of that section, which says, "And to obtain as a massage and bodywork therapist, a massage therapist permit, the individual must be a licensed massage therapist or be grandfathered as an established Casper massage therapist."
I'll second that.
So the amendment that has been put forward is under section 804-090, purpose and intent for including massage therapy and bodywork businesses in license, by Councilwoman Kathy, seconded by Councilman Huber. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion to amend passed.
And I have a proposed amendment number five, which is to create section 8.04.250, which is exemptions for professional practices. And I would now refer back to, as I did previously, to the packet that you and the committee and was published in for public distribution, that section is proposed.
I'll second that.
Okay, so the creation of section 8.04.250, exemptions for professional practices, has been put on the table by Councilwoman Kathy, seconded by Councilman Huber. Any discussion? Councilman Huber.
Mr. Mayor, I would just say that I think that this provision addresses what the young lady had brought up earlier today about worrying about therapists and all those other kind of people. This addresses that, and I think does so properly.
Okay. Any other discussion on this amendment? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion to amend passed.
You're done? Okay, do we have any other amendments? I guess the question, did we add in the terms under the definition that we were talking about? Did I miss that?
I thought we did. I did not add the terms. Could you repeat your terms?
Massage therapist, massage practitioner, massage assistant.
I did not make an amendment to add those in.
Councilman Huber.
Mr. Mayor, I kind of studied that, and as much as I respect Mr. Seek and his suggestion, I didn't feel that that really advanced the purpose of this ordinance any, and that's why I did not propose that we add those terms in there.
Any further amendments? Okay, so back to discussion on the ordinance as amended. Any further discussion? Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just really want to thank all of the massage therapists in town who came forward and had really constructive, good input on this. And I really especially want to thank Councilwoman Kathy for the hard work that he did on this. I was able to kind of just coattail along and follow along and ride on his hard work here. But I really do want to recognize Councilwoman Kathy and all the people that took the trouble to come forward and make suggestions. You know, it's like I said, and everybody always says, "Don't watch sausage being made, you'll never eat another sausage. Don't watch laws being crafted, because it's like watching a sausage be made." But I think that we're going to have a pretty good, workable ordinance here, and I'm proud of this end product.
Councilman Cathy.
Well, I know a lot of people have thanked me for my time, but basically, the time and the effort actually goes to the members of the committee. They were the ones that put this together, and then the city staff. And Heather and Amanda and Mr. Henley deserve a boatload of credit for their time and effort in legalizing all of the comments that were brought in by the committee members. And it's those people that deserve the credit. So I want to thank all of them. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion on the ordinance as amended? All right. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
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 Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Okay, please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change of lots three and four, Hembree, addition number two, in the city of Casper, Wyoming. two, in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. Council will now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against the Hembree addition third reading ordinance? Okay, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
If I may. Councilman Powell.
I want to salute the Platte River Trust for continuing their work on expansion of our trail system, and again, compliment Councilman Hopkins for identifying a place for the bridge across the Platte River that will provide access to our trail system to two or 3,000 people who live in the Oregon Trail area who currently do not have easy access to that trail system. And so this will, this is one piece in that puzzle that will make it possible for make, for us to complete that expansion.
Okay, any further discussion? Any amendments? Okay, any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving the Mesa del Sol IV subdivision agreement and the vacation in replat, creating Mesa del Sol IV addition.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Kathy, seconded by Councilman Pacheco. Council now listen to public comment. Public comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Is there anybody who would like to speak for or against Mesa del Sol IV addition? Okay, any discussion? Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving the Kinko addition number two subdivision agreement and the final plat, creating Kinko addition number two.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Kathy. Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Okay, any discussion? Any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Please read the ordinance on third reading by title only.
Amending ordinance number 11 hyphen 11, granting a franchise agreement to Source Gas Distribution LLC.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins. Seconded by Councilman Powell. Council will now listen to public hearing, or public comments. Public comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. Good evening.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. Michael Hough, I'm the community affairs manager for Black Hills Energy. We're located at 1535 East Yellowstone. A little nervous now due to the delayed motion and second. Just wanted to take a moment to thank everybody, including the city manager, Liz Betcher, and the mayor, I mean, the attorney's office for the work on this franchise. We're looking forward to it hopefully passing after this, and referring to it as Black Hills Energy's franchise agreement instead of Source Gas moving forward. And as long as I'm here, I just wanted to take a quick moment and say we are committed to Casper and the future of this partnership. Last year, we completed a $54 million upgrade in our gas, gas transmission system from the natural bridge area to Casper. So that'll allow for significant growth for the city for years and years to come. And so, so we're committed here for a long time. And if it's okay, I'd like to introduce the area manager for the Casper operations, Jonathan Boudreau. Excuse the raging Cajun accent, but he just wants to give a brief update on the kind of work we've done this past year and we look forward to doing in the future years.
How y'all doing? Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor and everyone here for taking the time to talk about our franchise agreement. It's very important to us to stay engaged with our community, with our 30,000 customers here. We, we enjoy doing our upgrades. This year, we've done about $3.5 million worth of upgrades to the system in the city of Casper, mainly in the Country Club areas, the Westland areas, and now we're working in the Vista West areas to better, better boost the integrity of our system, to continue to our goals, which is offering that safe and reliable gas to all of our customers. So appreciate y'all's time, and thanks again.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else who would wish, wish to comment on this? Okay, discussion? All right, any amendments? Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
All right, please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 9A1, changing Conwell Park to Healing Park at, on Conwell. Item 9A2, authorizing amendment number one with GeoSynTech Consultants for the Casper Regional Landfill Lifetime Permit Annual Reporting and Monitoring Project. Item 9A3, initiating the annexation of 24.01 acres, more or less described as the East Robertson Road addition. Item 9A4, authorizing the mayor to sign the fiscal year 2020 Casper Historic Preservation Commission annual report. And item 9A5, authorizing a ratification agreement with Wool Brothers, Inc. for a long-term lease in the city Casper parking garage.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Huber. Mr. City Manager, would you like to comment on any of the items?
No, thank you.
Okay. Any abstention or nay votes? I am going to abstain out of item 9A3. Okay, all, all voting aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With the abstention of Mayor Freel on item 9A3 noted, motion to, uh, uh, motion passed.
Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 10A1, the approval of the creation of a CARES Act fund. Item 10A2, reappointing Mark Pepper to the Economic Development Joint Powers Board. Item 10A3, reappointing Charles Moore to the Hall of Justice Detention Center Joint Powers Board. Item 10A4, appointing Ronald Shawsh Jr. to the Old Yellowstone District Architectural Design Review Committee. Item 10A5, appointing property owners to the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee. And item 10A6, appointing Victory Hall, Michael McIntosh and Ken Bates to the Casper Planning and Zoning Commission.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Huber, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilman Kathy.
The only thing that I have is there was a joint powers water board meeting today, and a letter was approved to send to the DEQ revising the timeline for the installation, for the funding, planning, and installation of the UV disinfection facility at the central water plant. That's the only thing that I have, and that extends that out. If it's approved, construction would actually occur in '26 through '28.
Okay. Councilman Johnson.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to, um, say that I should be back next week. I did help COVID my quarantine out yesterday, but I just wanted to be conscious and take this extra day while I'm not in council chamber. I should be back next week.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Hopkins.
Nothing to say, thank you.
Councilman Powell.
This will be my last statement on this matter publicly, but I had someone in my office today who had COVID-19 earlier last month and recovered physically. He's severe, he's contracted some serious brain damage secondary to the disease. He has periods of time where he doesn't know where he is. He's no longer able to work. He was in a managerial position and cannot perform his duties any longer. He has periods where he doesn't recognize his own spouse. His prognosis is not good. So people who want to talk about this as just another flu virus, or some problem that's been exaggerated by media accounts, are simply wrong. It's serious. We've got three or four months. We've got to get through this. But we need to be serious and try to prevent these things from happening. We can do this if people will just get serious and stay focused for a few more months while this, until this, until the vaccines come online. So that's my encouragement to the community, is to continue their efforts so we don't have more casualties like this.
Councilman Bates. Councilman Huber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the last regular meeting that I will have the privilege to sit here as a member of the council, and so I'd kind of like to reflect on a couple of things. There are always pluses and minuses, and other than pluses and things. It really has been a pleasure to work with the city staff and each and every fellow council member that I've served with. And serving here has really truly reaffirmed my faith in the resilience and the strength of our democracy. And I've been greatly honored to have been chosen to represent the people of Ward One, which is what I would call the heart of Casper. I'm really pleased with the action that we took tonight to recognize Conwell Park as a place where we can encourage people to go and contemplate healing kind of activities and things like that. I do have to say that the, there are two real disappointments that stand out to me, and one, I blame on myself, because in the transportation, long-term planning, I did not take as active of a role in that as I should have, because I think that it was a real failure that the extension of Wyoming Boulevard down out to Hat Six. I think that's something that's going to absolutely haunt this city in the, for the next 50 years in terms of eastward expansion and growth. And I, and I take that, that's a personal disappointment to me because I didn't get as involved in that as I should have. The other thing that's been a disappointment to me is frankly, I got to say it, the selfishness of a lot of people when it comes to things like building codes that deal with the health and safety of our fellow citizens, and people that come forward and say, "Well, you can't tell me what I can and can't do with my property." And that say, "Well, those people choose to live under substandard conditions." That's very disappointing to me. But I, I do want to just really, truly want to know all of you guys and all the people that are listening. Serving on the council has just been a great honor for me, and, and something that I will always cherish very much. And the, the working relationship that I've had with each and every one of you guys has just been great, and, and something I'll always cherish.
Councilman Pacheco.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to take a few minutes because everything gets, kind of does get crazy on the last, on the first council meeting of the year. And I want to thank the council members that are leaving for their dedication and the work that they've done. They brought their gifts and their talents to the council. And one of the things that I always talk about is that in an age of hyper partisan politics and, and the destructive nature of, of some of the ways that we treat people because we disagree, I always find it a blessing and comforting to be and to work with these guys, with everybody on this council, and, and knowing that we can disagree politically, or we can disagree on how those happen, but we can also still respect each other. And I think that that's a, a great thing that the ones that are leaving the council showed us, and worked with us on that. And I want to thank them for their hard work and their dedication, and I'm sure I'll see you around town and so forth. But I just want to say thank you to them for all their hard work, and they will be missed. So, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lutz.
I feel like Ray has my notes because he literally just said a lot of what I had already written down and wanted to say. Obviously, next week, even if we have a special meeting, it'll be relatively brief and specific. And so, just a big thank you to all of you that are leaving. That tonight would have been the last time I would have served as a council or next week. And just thanks for making my experience here so great. I fully believe that the reason my entrance into politics went so well is because of our current council and how amazing we are as a group, and how effective we've been. So I just wanted to say thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. The, only two things. He already did. It was brief. He said he wished he could be here with you tonight, but... So I would echo what, that is one thing about this group here that I have always appreciated is the fact that if we don't agree, we don't agree here, but we always walk out those doors, and we're always shaking hands and, and appreciating what everybody brings to the table. So I appreciate serving with every one of you, and, and I'm sure we're definitely going to run into you. Some of you were keeping around on a couple boards, so that's good. And that, we're keeping that knowledge around. The other thing I was going to put out there is that the county commissioners did in fact vote tonight on a variance. So we're, we're asking, or our resolution was to expand the serving areas, if you will, of restaurants and bars, and allow them for the packaged liquor portion of, or for serving alcohol. But the county commission has, is asking the, or voting on asking for a variance for restaurants and bars to go back to the original hours, to not have that, not have that early shutdown on there. And it's my understanding that vote took place. I'm not quite sure. I, I think it passed, but, so that'll be, that'll be happening real soon. Other than that, that's all I have for this evening. So the next meeting of the city council will be a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, January 5th, 2020, in the council chambers, and a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, January 12th, 2020, in the council chambers. A notice of an executive session to take place at this date during this meeting was given. We have a matter to discuss regarding personnel. Therefore, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of that executive session, to reconvene this regular council, this regular meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of the regular meeting.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. I'm looking all over.
Excuse me. I, I think when you were talking about future meetings, I think the special meeting was not stated. If, if I, if I misheard that, I apologize. But if it wasn't, you may want to state it now if, if in fact that is the...
And it has not been stated, are we in fact having a special meeting then?
Mr. Mayor, that's what we would recommend in order to include those two items, yeah.
Somebody have a date then for next, and what time would we do that meeting?
22nd.
22nd? And a timeframe, Mr. City Manager? Is this a 4:30 or 6 o'clock?
If it pleases the council, we could certainly do it at 4:30.
Everybody good with a 4:30? Okay, so the next meeting of the, of the city council will be a special meeting to be held... be held on December 22nd, 2020, at 4:30 PM in the council chambers. Okay. And so then, notice of an executive session to take place at this date and during this meeting was given. We have a matter to discuss regarding personnel, therefore the Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session, and at the conclusion of that executive session, reconvene this meeting solely for the purposes of adjournment of this meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Cathy.
Second.
Second by Councilman Hopkins. There being a majority of members present, a motion to adjourn into an executive session, having been moved and seconded in that motion requiring a two-thirds majority of the council present. Any abstention or nay votes? All voting aye?
Aye.
Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passed.
Agreed, with a two-thirds majority of the council present voted in favor of the motion, we are hereby adjourned into an executive session.